They got our Dixies fan.
That is what I was. Who needs a fan?
I got a strange email. It was an invoice.
Yeah.
Boston veterans.
I think it's.
I think it's efficient.
Yeah, it could be.
I didn't open the attachment.
But if you if you get one from me sending send cash.
No. I got that one before.
Those are those are cards. I never asked for cards, but cash. I got that same one earlier today.
The invoice, yeah, I didn't open the attachment.
They're getting really good.
Really good.
That one was tricky. If you've been doing your cyber stuff, that is.
Love those emails.
All right, our IT department revamped our stuff now. Now documents, I get messages. If I want to go find one of my documents, I gotta go check our our spam filter. Because we can't accept certain files, even though.
That's the same.
We're seven o'clock. Mr. Roberts, we're good.
Good evening again, everyone. Welcome to our January 11th Portsmouth Town Council meeting. We will begin with the pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence for our men.
Thank you all. Again, just a quick overview for those of you participating from home, you're on the Zoom. Raise your hand with the icons if you're calling in. Star six to mute and on YouTube phone and star nine will indicate that you have a question. When participating, please state your name and address. Put it down quick. That we will begin with our roll call.
Here. Ms. Abbott.
Want to come back in a second?
Ms. Bumey.
Yeah.
Ms. Hamilton.
Here.
Here.
Dr. Ryan.
Here.
Ms. Rader.
Here.
I don't see her back yet. She's not listed on the screen.
We will. Mark John. Prior to council meeting today, we did have. A executive session. Two personnel matters were discussed. No votes were taken. That concludes my executive report. On to our consent agenda.
Move to approve as presented. Seconded.
Ms. Jujutsu.
Hi.
Hi. Hi.
Here, hi.
That's the last question. Hi.
Here, hi. Motion passes six to zero. Yes. Yeah, under. Well, we've got for the Board of License Commissioners, the first item there for the particular license. They've asked to be. Heard at our next meeting to continue to our next meeting, so we will not. Will not be hearing that tonight.
Move to continue this item to the following meeting. Seconded.
All those in favor.
Ms. Jujutsu.
Hi.
Mr. Bumey.
Hi.
Ms. Hamilton.
Hi.
Hi.
Dr. Ryan.
Hi.
Dr. Rader.
Hi. Motion passes six to zero.
Move to adjourn as the Board of License Commissioners. Second.
All those.
Ms. Jujutsu.
Hi.
Mr. Bumey.
Hi.
Ms. Hamilton.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Dr. Ryan.
Hi.
Ms. Rader.
Hi. Motion. Six to zero. Next, we have minutes from our December 7th and December 14th meetings.
Move to approve. Seconded.
All those in favor.
Ms. Jujutsu.
Hi.
Mr. Bumey.
Hi.
Ms. Hamilton.
Hi.
Kelly.
Hi.
Dr. Ryan.
Hi.
Dr. Rader.
Hi. Motion passes six to zero. On to our town administrators' report, Mr. Ray.
He is present, the town council, ladies and gentlemen. With respect to our COVID-19 update on this conference term on Saturday night. As the Rhode Island vaccination update. As of last Friday, almost 30,000 people have received one dose of the COVID vaccine. Close to 1,800 people have received two doses of vaccine and are now theoretically fully vaccinated against COVID-19. Department of Health is working hard to distribute the vaccines. The supply is. Right now, they are receiving approximately 14,000 doses each week. Rhode Island Department of Health is ordering the maximum allotted amount of doses available to the state on a weekly basis. Also important note that first doses in Rhode Island are not being held back to prepare for second doses. The federal government is managing distribution of second doses. This means that every time we receive a first dose in our state, the federal government holds back one dose in their warehouse to ensure adequate supplies of second doses. Rhode Island Department of Health has recently clarified the plan for phase one of our state's vaccination program. So essentially, first responders, healthcare workers, nursing home staff, residents, COVID vaccinators, urgent care workers, and incarcerated persons 65 and older have started their first doses. Other healthcare, other healthcare professionals will start the week of January 25th. And then adults over 75 are projected to start in February or March, depending on the arrival of vaccine doses. The state is currently working with it with a Department of Health Vaccine Subcommittee to develop a plan for phase two and will share more information with the public as soon as decisions are made about future phases. More details can be found on their website, and there is much more COVID update information available on our COVID-19 section of the town's website. Respect to East Main Road, Rhode Island Department of Transportation has released the final version of the East Main Road Safety Assessment. It is available for review, can be found on the front page of our town website. The Road Safety Assessment Interdisciplinary Team will review the report tomorrow with representatives of Rhode Island Department of Transportation and the contractor who was hired to prepare the document. The intent is to is to report an implementation plan and recommendations to the council at or next meeting. Respect to the audit, the comprehensive annual financial report was finalized and submitted to the state last month. The report is available for review via the Finance Department webpage, and the auditing firm will be invited to brief the report to the council in February. Respect to the senior center. As most people are aware, the N Hutchinson Building, which houses the Portsmouth Senior Center, will no longer be available for that purpose as of July 1st. Senior Center is a private nonprofit, but they do receive considerable funding from the town. I've been working to find a new home for the center, and I believe the solution would be to. Short intermediate term, the town administrator in Middletown and I have been working on developing a proposed temporary home for the Portsmouth Senior Center starting this summer. He will discuss his plan. And my proposal with his council next week. For the long term, I have been working with the Church Community Housing Group to develop a plan that would entail the development of a new facility for a Portsmouth Senior Center. I will be reaching out to various stakeholders in the near future to further refine this concept and prepare prepare a proposal for consideration by the council. And I'll keep the council informed if progress is made. And then lastly, I was formally notified this morning that Lisa Mills, our finance director, will resign her position effective July, January 29th. She is accepting a new position in her field, and I hope I echo everyone's sentiment when I say thank you, Lisa, for everything you've done for Portsmouth. I sincerely wish you much happiness and success in your new endeavor. I have asked Lisa to work with the entire finance, human resources, and tax team to ensure an orderly turnover of all her current duties and responsibilities until such a time as we can install a new director. And Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Ray. Okay, on to our resignations and appointments. First item is resignation. Mr. Mike Sheen from the Rhode Island planning commission.
Move to accept with regret. Seconded.
All those in favor.
Ms. Jujutsu.
Hi.
Ms. Abbott.
Hi.
Mr. Bumey.
You did. Yes, I.
Ms. Hamilton.
Hi.
Kelly.
Hi.
Dr. Ryan.
Hi.
Ms. Rader.
Hi. Motion passes seven to zero. Next, we have appointments to the Economic Development Committee. The appointment of.
Move to approve. Seconded. Sorry, Mark.
All those in favor.
Ms. Jujutsu.
Hi.
Ms. Abbott.
Hi.
Mr. Bumey.
My computer keeps muting itself. I. Sure. Hi.
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 Dr. Rader.
Hi. Motion passes seven to zero.
We'll just call him the rookie. Every time I minimize the screen, it mutes. I don't know why.
Okay, next, next, we have the West Side Development, and there's one vacancy, two applicants. Do we have a motion?
Motion to appoint Conrad Donahue.
Seconded.
All those in favor.
Ms. Jujutsu.
Hi.
Ms. Abbott.
Hi.
Mr. Bumey.
Hi.
Ms. Hamilton.
Hi.
Kelly.
Hi.
Dr. Ryan.
Hi.
Ms. Rader.
Hi. Motion passes seven to zero. And next, we have a reappointment for the. Calling proposal.
Move to approve. Seconded.
All those in favor.
Ms. Jujutsu.
Hi.
Ms. Abbott.
Hi.
Mr. Bumey.
Hi.
Ms. Hamilton.
Hi.
Hi.
Dr. Ryan.
Hi.
Ms. Rader.
Hi. Motion passes seven to zero. We have next to it's a reappointment to the Juvenile Hearing Board for Nancy.
Move to approve both Nancy Smith and Mr. Weber. Seconded. Ever or Viber? Ever, I think. Sounds like Weber.
Are you the second?
I seconded both.
Okay, thank you.
All those in favor.
Ms. Jujutsu.
Hi.
Ms. Abbott.
Hi.
Mr. Bumey.
Hi.
Ms. Hamilton.
Hi.
Kelly.
Hi.
Dr. Ryan.
Hi.
Ms. Rader.
Hi. Motion passes seven to zero. Next, it's the Melville Park Committee, reappointment for Matthew Ellsworth.
Move to Mr. Ellsworth to the Melville Park Committee.
Second.
All those in favor.
Ms. Jujutsu.
Hi.
Ms. Abbott.
Hi.
Mr. Bumey.
Hi.
Ms. Hamilton. Kelly.
Hi.
Dr. Ryan.
Hi.
Ms. Rader.
Hi. Motion passes seven to zero. Next, we have the reappointment for the Tree Commission, Leslie Costin.
Move to reappoint Ms. Costin to the Tree Commission. Second.
All those in favor.
Ms. Jujutsu.
Hi.
Ms. Abbott.
Hi.
Mr. Bumey.
Hi.
Ms. Hamilton.
Hi.
Hi.
Dr. Ryan.
Hi.
Ms. Rader.
Hi. Motion passes seven to zero. And then we have two reappointments to the West Side Development Committee, Ms. Terry Corkman and Mr. Ed Locust.
Move to approve both.
Second.
All those in favor.
Ms. Jujutsu.
Hi.
Ms. Abbott.
Hi.
Mr. Bumey.
Hi.
Ms. Hamilton.
Hi.
Hi.
Dr. Ryan.
Hi.
Dr. Rader.
Hi. Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you all. On to old business. Old business number one is our DPW contract.
President, Town Council, you have for you the proposed intent to agree contract between Town Portsmouth and our Public Works Union, the National Association of Government Employees, local to the. Provisions agreed to between the parties are reflected in this collective bargaining agreement. And I'll just review with you the highlights. A 2% raise in each of the three years of the contract, which is consistent with the collective bargaining agreements with the other unions in town. An annual limit of 48 hours on compensatory time, which cannot be carried over and cannot result in an overtime situation. Any unused comp time will be paid to the employee pursuing Fair Labor Standards Act. Call back during weekend snowstorms will be for a minimum of four hours, as opposed to the current three hours, with not more than one employee eligible for vacation time during the weekend, unless there is 48 hours advanced notice for a second employee. Lunchtime rules have been clarified. Domestic partners are added to the definition of bereavement time off. Light duty eligibility has been defined. The dress code has been instituted. It's agreed that the town would contribute $2 to an employee's FSA plan for every $1 contributed by the employee, up to a maximum of $250. Employees may donate up to 90 hours of sick pay to fellow employees. And a pattern of abuse and sick leave will result in progressive discipline. But based upon the good faith negotiations which took place, it is my recommendation that the collective bargaining agreement with the Department of Public Works be ratified.
Thank you, Ms. Ray. Have any comments, questions from councilmen? We also have the Financial Impact Statement, it's all the numbers that are that are in the agreement, so thank you for that.
On ratification, it'll be posted on.
Move to approve the three-year contract for the DPW Union. Seconded.
All those in favor.
Ms. Jujutsu.
Hi.
Ms. Abbott.
Hi.
Mr. Bumey.
Hi.
Ms. Hamilton.
Hi.
Hi.
Dr. Ryan.
Hi.
Dr. Rader.
Hi. Motion passes seven to zero. Now for our monthly finance report, Ms. Mills, can you help us on your last assignment here?
Thank you. One more.
Oh, yeah, you'll be. You, all right.
I will calculate taxes, the budget update for November 2020. This update represents 41.67% of the current fiscal year. Overall revenues are currently at 41% lower than last year's 40%. Expenditures are 40% higher than last year's 38%. There are no significant wire or easy transactions to follow.
Motion to receive and place on file, but I do have a quick question. Seconded. Thank you, Mr. Ray. I'm assuming that 3% for the 41 of the 44 is probably mostly car tax?
Yeah.
That's fine. That's all.
1.5 million. And I believe 1.5 million we had in.
Yep.
Yeah, 1.53 million last year in the morbidal vaccination issue. We don't have that. But we are higher.
Those were just sent out.
And we just.
Right.
We are higher penalties than interest.
No.
No.
Oh, we have a, we do have a hand up. Hello, Mr. Chris Morris, you're muted.
Didn't hear you the first time. Thank you. Larry Fitzmaurice, 50, Kristen Court. Took a look at this report. Looks like we're behind in a number of different categories in revenue year to date. And I won't go so much through the details, but it looks like we're significantly behind. Couple of questions. Are we projecting a deficit?
No.
Number two is, has the contingency fund set up for the council for this particular fiscal year? What are the funds in that right now?
That's 400,000.
What would be used is only 26,000, right? So, do you have anything about?
They can.
There are a number of funds. There was the COVID contingency fund. There's the Town Council contingency fund. Between the two of those. Which one are you? So I see what you're referring to, Mr. Chris Morris. Yeah, so that contingency fund, which was 250, about $256,000. So far, only $26,639 has been spent.
All right, thank you. I think I got most of that. Truck went by and I lost you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Mark. Okay. Got a motion and a second. All those in favor.
Ms. Jujutsu.
Hi.
Ms. Abbott.
Hi.
Mr. Bumey.
Hi.
Ms. Hamilton.
Hi.
Hi.
Dr. Ryan.
Hi.
Ms. Rader.
Hi. Motion passes seven to zero. Moving on. That time of year to discuss our proposed state legislative priorities.
Right, interesting. Thank you so much. I think every year we meet with our state legislators, and that meeting is a joint meeting between Town Council, School Committee, and our state legislators representing Portsmouth. And that will be happening in two weeks. But tonight, I thought I could go over the recommendations that we would present to our state legislators, tracking the procedures of the school committee who have do what we're doing, which is to discuss it as a group and present to the state legislators our priorities. So what you see before you looks like a compilation of the recommendations that have come from various sources. I believe it starts with the recommendations that Counselor Ryan and I presented, frankly, have presented every year for the last several years and has been have been approved. But I'll go over them again very briefly, and I thought the procedure for tonight would be that we could each sort of just say a few words about our priorities. And then we can go through them one at a time and vote as a council to see which ones we would be presenting to our state legislators. So just to quickly go through ours, I'm starting with number one. Climate change resiliency funding would be come from legislation, and I'm sorry, we do not have legislative numbers or bills yet. But one would involve creating Oscar, the Ocean State Climate Adaptation Resilience Fund. And it would come from five cent per barrel fee that would fund direct grants to cities and towns to adapt our infrastructure to help us improve resilience in the face of climate change. Number two is our ask that we've made several, a few years in a row about funding what the General Assembly already passed, which is a grant of Rhode Island Municipal Infrastructure Grant Program. It's based, it's modeled after the very successful Massworks program in Massachusetts. I am afraid that it did not make the March election, special election list of bonds to be considered. So I guess our ask would be to try to get that on the next election.
There was some infrastructure in there, wasn't there? It was one, there was a small little piece of it.
Yes, yes. But I think they were looking for 30 million to fund this. And RIB and Grow Smart Rhode Island has has more information about this. But in any case, it seems odd that the state legislature would pass the bill and not fund it. And so that's something. Number three is, as always, we believe that part of the reason the taxes in our on our property owners in Portsmouth are high are resulting from past trickle-down economics that have been applied to cut the taxes on the highest income earners in Rhode Island. And that happened in 2006. And as we can see, that wasn't very successful, and we would like to revert and go back to the taxes, the higher taxes on the wealthiest Rhode Islanders. I can tell you that it seems they keep moving up who they've defined as the higher tax earners. When last I spoke to some of the legislators working on this, they've moved it up to folks who are making more than $450,000 per year. So frankly, I don't think that affects, or I think that that is a fair shift. So frankly, I don't think that affects, or I think that that is a fair shift of the burden away from our middle-class property owners. And number four is that we want to protect our citizens' health and welfare. And so there are two bills, a new one this year, which is that we would like to have the auditor general look into the private health insurance companies that are essentially running our Medicaid system in the state. The auditor general has called for tighter financial controls for the last five years, and nothing has been done. Connecticut took an audit of their private companies that were running their Medicaid program, found that they were wasting about $50 million per year. And they tossed them out in 2012 and started running the program themselves. And they've saved hundreds of millions of dollars. Just in 2015, our private insurance companies overcharged Rhode Islanders $50 million and took us about two years to claw that back. So I would encourage our legislators to look into that private insurance company problem. And I'll let Councilman Ryan address the Medicare for All bill that we also support.
Yeah, I mean, just one other word on the Medicaid audit. Medicaid funds 60% of nursing home care in this state. It's an important funder for hospital care as well. And unfortunately, Medicaid is a huge percentage of the state budget. And so for economy-minded governors, such as our outgoing one, that is a logical target to cut. Unfortunately, when they do that, without making it more efficient, which this proposal seeks to do, you reduce Medicaid reimbursement. And that was a very large part of the reason why Pawtucket Memorial Hospital closed its doors. And that puts great strain on the rest of the providers of care in the state. So trying, if we're really serious about trying to trim the waste in our state budget and perhaps free up funds which might be used to increase reimbursement back to municipalities, it would be good to see if any money could be saved in the Medicaid program. And that's what these bills seek to do. As far as single payer, we have several bills that we've actually introduced into the state legislature. One is to encourage our legislature to actually push forward a single payer national health insurance program, which virtually, in fact, every honest economic audit has found would save a vast amount of money and result in a more equitable and efficient healthcare system. We've also asked the legislatures to investigate the possibility of seeking a waiver from the Affordable Care Act from the incoming Biden administration to look at the feasibility of a single payer system in this state. Although a federal nationwide program would obviously be far more cost-saving, among other things, for instance, the, a, a single payer program would largely erase OPEB. Other post-employment benefits are largely, the majority of them are actually healthcare costs and a national system. Our OPEB debt would be erased. And obviously, we're all in favor of that. As far as the state system is concerned, it obviously wouldn't achieve the level of savings, but it could hardly be more wasteful than what we have right now. And I would point out that in Canada, this was started in the province of Saskatchewan with, which had a million inhabitants, pretty much the same as Rhode Island. And it was run successfully in that one province for eight years before it was nationalized. So we think that the, our, our state and federal legislators should at least examine these possibilities, given the fact that healthcare in this state and this country is becoming rapidly more unaffordable. And our healthcare infrastructure is becoming more financially unstable.
And the last thing I would add is that we accidentally left off what is currently listed as Mr. Heflin, Heflin's recommendation to continue to address the problem that was created by the lawsuit that said that every three-year assessments are not allowed. So I'll let Matt address that, but that should have been in our list. And I took it out because I was under the mistaken impression that that had gone forward. So I guess if people want to continue along the list of recommendations. Council Hamilton?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Just two quick ones. It's no secret that recreational marijuana is going to be pushed down our throats by the state legislators to help close budget gaps that are caused by COVID and also just poor budgets. So I would like to see us making sure that us being a host community at this point in time, and as soon as recreational becomes the law, green leaf will be flipping over from just a medical marijuana facility to a recreational marijuana facility. I would like to see, make sure that the host communities, whether it be us or any other community, is reimbursed for the costs provided, the cost that it costs us to provide safety for that via fire cost. And also a mechanism to provide a sales tax for direct payments back to the town, similar to what Massachusetts has set up. And I'd like to have that set up similar to the way the restaurant meals tax does it. It goes to the state and comes right back. It doesn't go into the general fund where it can be repurposed for something else. It needs to be coming right back. And then, thirdly, I'd like to make sure that we don't end up with three or four on every corner. So I propose one facility for every 50,000 residents per host community. That would mean that Portsmouth would have to grow three times its size in order to have more than one. I don't think we need it to be like liquor stores where we have four, five, or six in a community. And then next. This was a very difficult, and we've struggled for a long time as a council and as a, as the staff did as well. In trying to make sure our budget for this year took into everything into account, including COVID, the potential for funds not coming in. And we came down to a, a tax increase that was a little bit higher than I think we all wanted, in terms of the needs of the community. Town is managed by a 4% tax cap. When I opened up my water bill this year, found out that it went up at about nine and a half percent. And I think that's absolutely disgusting. I was under the impression that water and fire districts would be underneath the Pivotal Week cap, but it is not. And I would like to recommend that we have our legislators draw up legislation to put those quasi municipality groups underneath the Pivotal Week cap as well. And then, Madam Vice President, mentioned the special election that's coming out. I would also like to request that since the state General Assembly did not do their job and pass a budget and get these bills in for the regular election, that the General Assembly fund the entire special election out of the General Assembly, and we don't have to pay for it from the town side.
Thank you, Ms. Hamilton.
I believe, I don't know if the staff are all present, but perhaps they'd like to just say a few words about their recommendations or not. Mr. Crosby?
I didn't see him on.
Okay.
This is the town administrator speaking to Mr. Crosby. It's relatively simple. The first one is we would like to promote that the state proposed and pushed forward the idea that the state take over Defense Highway, Springham Road from the Navy. The Navy is trying to press themselves from that responsibility. And there was always a period of rapid pace. Two, he's proposing, this is the same one as last year and year before, that the state update the low moderate income housing act, remove any impediments that are in place towards compliance from municipalities and those wanting to develop a deadline on housing right now. The way the housing act is written is section possible that a town like Portsmouth would ever be able to be.
Thank you, Mr. Woodhead.
Council President, members of the council, my recommendations are pretty much, they reflect the same as number one and number two and Linda's and Dr. Ryan's request. And I always seek funding to improve the state roads and also to seek funding for local municipalities, roadways, and infrastructure. And like Mr., like Linda said, Massachusetts has a great, great program, not just the mass roads, but also they have, you know, Chapter 90 money that the state gives them. And also too, they have complete street fundings too. So I hope that the legislature will be able to come up with some kind of solution for funding those kind of projects for municipalities in Rhode Island.
Thank you. If there's nothing else, I guess Chief Ford.
He's not present. Again, Mr. Town Administrator, I can speak to that.
He's here. He's just muted.
How's that?
There we go.
Well, good evening. The two priorities that I listed, number one, we, we need and could, a serious need for funding assistance for the COVID-19 vaccine distribution. Everybody seems to be in the same position where we are tasked with distributing these vaccines, which we're capable of doing, but it takes a lot of manpower, it takes a lot of volunteerism, but it also takes a lot of fire department, police department manpower. And no one has accounted for these costs. We're at a point right now where we've, as we said earlier, fire police, certain healthcare workers that received their first dose, the second one will be coming up. And we don't have any idea yet how much further this is going to go. We are assuming it may go to a full-blown med pod for Portsmouth at some point. So somebody really needs to address that funding. And the other thing is to ask legislators to advocate for additional funding for the assistance, the firefighter grant and the staffing for adequate fire emergency response. Portsmouth has been the beneficiary of these grants in the past. We had, we just were awarded a safer grant. We, we just were turned down on an AFG, but we will be trying again. We have had one in the past. But these grants are critical these days for fire departments to get manpower and certain equipment needs fulfilled that the communities just can't afford anymore.
Thank you, Chief Ford. Matt?
Good evening. This is just a continuation. The bill was getting support from the League of Cities and Towns. And I think we were having some nice momentum with it until COVID hit. But this is just to address the issues from Balmouth where for appeal periods that it would be locked into the last revale rather than having to update them every year.
Right, thank you. I'm hopeful that will go through. And Lisa?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. My first recommendation is to make sure that we have pay equity in minimum wages that, so that we remain competitive with nearby Massachusetts, so that we retain the talent that we have in Rhode Island within the state. And then, secondly, expanding plastic can from bags to other consumable products.
Okay, and thank you. Mr. Taliwski?
I didn't see Rich.
Rich isn't here.
No, he's on, he's on the other side. There we go.
Okay, can you hear me?
We got you.
Okay, great. I think that high-speed internet connectivity is important, both for our citizens and our business. And I think to support that, we need a director-level position on the governor's office to husband that issue.
Right. Rich, are you still there?
Still, still here.
Oh, okay. And, and did you, and the advocacy for the electronic?
I said to support internet improvement and accessibility.
Oh, I see, I see.
Need a director-level office in the office of the governor to support that.
Okay, thank you. So I, Mr. President, I would recommend, unless, that perhaps what we could do differently than the school committee narrowed their priorities to just, I believe, two or three, is to possibly just have the council approve all of these potential priorities and then bring them to the meeting. And we can hear back from our state legislators to see, you know, what their take is on the possibility of passing these various things. And that might be the best way to go, rather than just narrow these at all, unless people have a serious objection to certain ones. I would make a motion to approve all of these priorities to bring before the, the state legislators at our next meeting.
We have a motion in a second, and I have a discussion. I just want, you know, I, I think it's a great idea. And I think, I, I think even Brian had mentioned, like, his could be consolidated because they're very similar to what, you know, you had put in there. So I, so I do agree that, you know, the only thing we could do is maybe consolidate, just if there was a little bit of overlap. But other than that, I fully agree these are, you know, as we stated, you know, some of these you, we've kind of asked them about for a few years in a row now. But it'd be nice to hear from them, you know, which ones of these they're kind of championing. Some of these bills are in, you know, are they supporting them? If so, great. If not, why not? But yeah, no, I, I, I think we should vote on this. We have a motion in a second.
No, I'm sorry. Could I amend, could I amend my motion to also say that we submit these to our state legislators as soon as possible? Like, I could forward them tomorrow. So they will have a maximum amount of time to prepare and be able to engage in a discussion about them. So I just add.
Can we just make sure we add the request to fund the special election on a statewide basis?
Yes.
Before you forward it, please? Thank you.
Yes.
Okay. Anything else from council? All those in favor?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Bumrah?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Helen?
Hi.
Hi.
And Mr. Ia.
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you all. Okay, on to new business. First item is our West Main Road safety audit resolution.
Right. I think we beat up the draft before you. There might be a typo. I believe the police chief said that I had written citations, and it was, citations isn't the correct word. But in any case, he does support it. And if the rest of the council approves this resolution, then I guess the process is that it would then go to the police chief who writes a letter to DOT. Correct me if I'm wrong, someone. But I thought it was important to get the kind of safety audit that we got on East Main Road, go, at least put ourselves in line to get it for West Main Road, so.
That process, Madam Vice President, that process you described is correct. If you approve this resolution, the chief of police will prepare a letter. It'll be submitted with this resolution and updated accident statistics. It will be submitted, obviously, in a request to conduct the same kind of audit of West Main Road.
Right.
Move to approve. Seconded.
We have a hand up. So let's just attend to the hand. Tom?
Hello, can you hear me?
We got you.
Great. Tom Grebe, 110 Thera Drive. I just wanted to reemphasize something that I said when we did the East Main Road audit. The, the road system through Portsmouth is really a whole system. And as Rideout said when they came in and talked about East Main Road, things you do there are going to affect West Main Road and vice versa, plus all the other connecting roads like Union, Sprague, Headley. I would, I, I applaud this. I, I have long thought it needed to be done, but I'd like to see a request for an entire state road look. state road look by Rideout as opposed to doing this piecemeal, East Main Road, West Main Road, then we're going to find Union has a problem. I, I really think it's a system, it works as a system, we ought to be looking at it as a system as opposed to individual pieces. It's like increasing the horsepower of a car without increasing the brake power. That's the sort of thing that I see can happen in this piecemeal sub-optimization way of doing it. And I would just suggest we just ask for a safety audit of all state roads in Portsmouth. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. I, I, I'm not sure how, how DOT would tackle that piece. I mean, it's something that, you know, we, I, I think what we saw when they were doing East Main Road is there was overlap between how East Main Road was, was reviewed with the potential for diversions over to West Main. So I, I think following up with this West Main Road safety audit request is really a smart thing on our behalf because a lot of the information is there, and it might, you know, some of the traffic data that they have is, is all relevant, but they would have to go out and look at all the, you know, the geometrics along West Main Road. I don't know how they would react to requesting all of the roads because those, those connector roads are, you know, there's probably three or four, but, but I don't really know how they would react. And I think a priority might be for us to ask about putting in the resolution for West Main Road, and, you know, we could ask them, we, we could ask them to look at the other roads, but I don't know, I don't know how relevant that would be, but doesn't hurt to ask. But I, I think the priority would definitely be West Main Road. And then secondary might, might be those other roads because it's only a portion of Middle Road, Rain Street. I don't, I don't know if there's accident data statistics to, to support anything, but I think what would happen is, is you'd have to look at the, the potential for crossovers and things like that, but it really only occurs when work is being done on East Main Road or West Main Road. Other than that, people are going to stay on East Main and West Main Road. They're not going to deviate just to, you know, try to find a shortcut through Middle Road unless there's a problem. But I, I, I do support West Main Road, and, you know, if other councillors feel we could, we should ask, that's okay too.
If I may?
Ms. Abbott? Yeah.
Yeah, I feel like we have the assessment for East Main Road, so we have the data there. If we ask for West Main Road, we might as well ask for the other state roads like Union, for example, so that we can start building a comprehensive assessment of all the state roads in town because I actually agree with Mr. Grebe that they, they do all work together, and there's issues on all of them, and we need funding for, for all of them. And, you know, I, my biggest concern is that we need to start somewhere and we can create assessments and studies and plans all day long. If, if we don't get some actual projects out of them, they're pretty useless. So I'm more interested in how we are going to, you know, implement and follow through on the projects identified on the road safety assessment that was done on East Main Road, than additional assessments. But I think this is an important first step, and I, and I support it. There was a road safety assessment done in, I believe, 2011, so 10 years ago, that covered several intersections in both East Main Road, Turnpike, and West Main Road. And I did a, you know, kind of a very brief assessment of what was proposed in the report versus the current state of affairs. And as far as I could tell, nothing had been done. So, you know, in conjunction with any requests for additional studies, I'd like to, to know a plan and timeline for how things are actually going to get completed.
Right. No, I, Mr. President, I, I would agree that it would, it'd be better to have a comprehensive plan. However, I do feel that we need to put ourselves in line for this study because we, you know, we are able to access certain funds that were state and federal grants that were identified in the East Main Road safety assessment that we should try to access while it's available. And we might be able to get not only studies done, but certain short-term safety measures implemented at the state's, on the state's dime. And so I feel like there's money there. I understand we should have a longer-term plan, but we need to react or act quickly to get in line to have these studies and short-term projects funded for ourselves, so.
Thank you, Ms. Jupita. Before we vote, I just want to jump back over to, there's a follow-up, I believe, from Tom.
Yes, could you hear me?
We got you.
Okay. I, I, I understand, and if we can only do West Main Road, it's better than not doing it. But if you remember, a lot of what was done on East Main Road was with modeling. And that, those models are much more powerful if they're of the entire system rather than just one tiny part of it. That's why I think, you know, if we can, if we could ask for this, it might actually be saving Rideout money because they could do one model as opposed to five models.
Tom, I, I agree. But I think what, and not to cut you off, but with the models, I think they're going to model the roads that are town roads, not the state roads. They're going to model Headley Street, they're going to model Union Street, you know, they're going to look at the, the cut through, the direct cut-throughs more than they're going to look at, you know, Middle Road.
I, 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 I agree with you, but those are state roads. Union's a state road, Middle Road's a state road, Headley's a state road.
No.
No.
Headley's not a state road, and only half of Middle Road is state, is state.
Okay. So I, I stand corrected. Union, Stray, Middle, those are the roads.
Your, your state roads are East Main, West Main, Union, half of Middle Road, Boyd's Lane, Anthony Road, Park Avenue, 24, and Sprague Street. I think I got them all, and Turnpike.
Did you get Turnpike? Yeah.
My, my point was that those are the roads that people will use if they're going from one road to the other, if there's a backup, that sort of thing. And if we're creating potentially, as we saw with East Main Road, some backup areas, it's going to push people onto those roads. I don't think we need to, to, to look at every road in, in Portsmouth by any stretch of the imagination. I, I just, I think the state roads, which are the major roads that people would travel if they're looking for a way to change their, their, their route because of an obstruction or something. I, I, you know, do, do what you, do what you wish, but I, I want you to at least consider that thought, you know, because I think it's, I think it's worth considering. Thank you.
Thank you. And I, I think we go back to, I think what councillor Jupita presented is the West Main Road is our priority, but we can ask them to look at the other, the other state roads. But we should focus on, you know, West Main Road is our primary. The other ones are, if they, if they're able to do it, we'll ask them. But West Main should be our, our priority. That's what's in the resolution. So we do have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
It's a reality at this point in time that West Main Road has seen a very fair share of serious accidents over the course, of course, the past couple of years. You know, simple things like realigning Headley Street and Cory would save a lot of things rather than having two lights there. So I think this is a very good thing to do.
Funny you should mention that. That was included in the 2011 road safety assessment.
Yeah, it was also included as part of redoing the bridge that never happened. So that was, it, it was tucked inside of the building, rebuilding the Scottic River Bridge, but it never happened.
Yeah, so how many more studies do we need sitting on a shelf?
All those in favor?
Ms. Jupita?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Buttermeyer?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Ms. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Ryan?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Did you get Dr. Ryan?
No, you didn't, but I, I vote aye as well.
We can see it in your eye.
Get to my eyes.
Okay. All right, on to new business number two. This is a letter received by Grow Smart relating to the solar ordinance.
Hi, this is the, the letter that we received from Grow Smart prior to our second hearing on the solar ordinance. I thought they made some really good recommendations that have not been incorporated into our solar ordinance, so I would like to take the, whatever steps required to amend our solar ordinance and incorporate some of the changes and recommendations they made, and never written an ordinance, and I've never introduced an ordinance, so I don't know what needs to happen next.
Okay. Well, I think we need to have Mr. Gavin on the line just to provide a little bit of direction here, but, Mr. Gavin?
Well, the agenda item is simply the letter. I don't think we can, it can be the start of a, you know, actual amendment process which starts a third, you know, 65-day clock running if, if someone proposes an amendment. And also, it's kind of, you know, the town council is the body that decides whether to enact an amendment or not, if, if, if one is proposed. I would suggest if, if you wanted, maybe possibly refer it to the planning department and the planning board for review and consideration of the suggestions set forth in the Grow Smart Rhode Island letter.
Okay, I think they're, sorry, I'm, I'm going to be more specific in my request. I think, maybe due to my lack of experience or me not understanding our very convoluted systems for passing ordinances, I would like to know step-by-step what I, as a town councillor, need to do to introduce an amendment and get it to the planning board. I'm going to write down those steps, and I'm going to follow them one by one because there's been some confusion and inconsistencies, in my opinion, with regards to how this should or should not work when we can or cannot provide input. So you're telling me that if I have changes that I think need to happen to the solar ordinance, what needs to happen? There are valid comments and recommendations included in this leather, letter, and I think they are worthy of consideration and justify introducing a request for an amendment.
Any person can propose an amendment, which is what happened when the dollar amendment was proposed. So any, any citizen, any, any person can, can submit an application and propose an amendment to the zoning ordinance, and that starts the process going. The planning board itself is, can, can propose an amendment. So what I'm suggesting is if you want to move this forward in consideration of the Grow Smart suggestions, refer to the planning board for the, the board to consider the recommendations by Grow Smart and see if the planning board wants to propose any amendments.
Can I do that tonight?
Well, I mean, it's not specifically on the agenda, but I think it's reasonable that, you know, in, with, with the agenda item being discussion of the Grow Smart letter, I don't, referring it to the planning board for consideration of, of the recommendations, I think it's within the, I don't think anyone could argue that, that, that's beyond the agenda item, but, you know, anyone can always say that the agenda is not specific enough. You can either, I think, do that tonight, or to be more prudent, put it on for the next, if that's your specific motion, perhaps put it on for the next council agenda. But, but if, if you were to vote on that tonight, I, I doubt that it would be a meritorious open meeting complaint that, that it was not properly on the agenda, but you never know if someone's going to complain, so. I think it's within the agenda item to, to make a motion to refer to the planning board to review the Grow Smart letter.
And make recommendations.
And, 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 yeah, let the planning board review them and study them and make recommendations as to whether they, the, the planning board wants to propose any specific amendments to the ordinance. And if the planning board should choose that they don't want to recommend anything, that any, any citizen or a group or applicant can propose an amendment to the zoning ordinance, and that would start the process going forward.
How does one propose an amendment to the planning board? Just write a letter?
The, the proposed amendment comes, actually, I think the way the zoning ordinance is written, it goes to the town clerk, who then submits it to the town council to schedule a hearing, and, and then it gets referred to the planning board for review and a recommendation to the council, and there's 65 days for the town council to hold a public hearing. That was the process that was followed on the proposed amendment that, that resulted in the zoning, the solar ordinance we have now.
So you submit in writing your proposed amendments to the town clerk, and she refers them to the planning board?
To the council.
Directly to the council.
Well, it goes to the council, and it gets simultaneously referred to the planning board for study and review and to make an advisory recommendation to the town council.
Um, question, so basically, we could make a motion to have Grow Smart's recommended changes to the ordinance forwarded to the planning board and the, and Mr. Crosby to review.
Review, and, and then they can decide whether they want to propose any amendments. I wouldn't, I don't think we're in a position to start an actual proposed zoning amendment.
Yeah, agreed.
Okay.
Alternatively, we can propose amendments ourselves based on the comments and input from this letter and submit them to the town clerk and put them on our next agenda.
Any, any person can do that. I, I think it's a little awkward for the town council to propose an amendment that, that's, that's, the council would decide on whether to enact or not, but, so I mean, but any, but you don't, the town council doesn't need to start the process. The town council is the legislative body that decides whether or not to adopt a proposed amendment.
So what happens if we ask to the planning board to review this letter and they don't want to amend it?
Then, then any person interested could, could submit a proposed amendment. I mean, there are several things suggested in there. There's not really one specific proposed amendment, but if, if any person wants to propose a specific amendment to the solar ordinance, that could be submitted to the town, and then that would start the ball rolling, and it would go to the, it would be scheduled for a hearing before the council, and within 65 days. And in the meantime, it gets referred to the planning board, who then seeks the advice of the planning department and to come up with a recommendation to the council. And then it's scheduled for a public hearing, three, three weeks of advertisements, and then there's a public hearing, and the council hears the public, and the council decides whether or not to adopt a proposed amendment.
Okay, I will make a motion that we forward this letter to the planning board for review so they can assess the recommendations made in the letter and weigh whether they want to amend the solar ordinance or not.
Seconded.
We have a motion and a second for the discussion. All those in favor?
Ms. Jupita?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Buttermeyer?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Ms. Ryan here?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero.
And thank you, Mr. Gavin, for clarifying.
Thank you, Mr. Gavin. Next, we have correspondence.
I shouldn't have received it in place on file.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Ms. Jupita?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Buttermeyer?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton? Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Ms. Ryan here?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Next, we have future meetings. Our next meeting is scheduled for January 25th. That's our joint town council, school committee legislative meeting, followed by our February 8th, February 22nd, and March 8th. followed by our February 8, February 22, and March 8, regularly scheduled town council meetings.
Motion to adjourn?
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Ms. Jupusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Futtermeyer?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Fred Ryan?
Aye.
Ms. Aguirre?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you all. Good evening, and we.
Good night, everybody. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Good night.
Happy Year and New Year. Stay safe.